A republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few items here. I just want to say how nice it was on Saturday to have the American Duchess tied up down in our levee and to thank all the people that were involved in helping accommodate and make that happen. Also want to just commend the owners of the old YWCA building, the Autism Center, for what a nice job they've done on that property and how bad it looked for so long and how nice it looks now. It's really, I've heard a lot of comments from people that are very pleased about it. And I want to say that at the end of this meeting, the council will be going into closed session, but we will complete all of our business. Before we do that, we'll go into closed session and we'll come back here and either conduct business and adjourn or just adjourn. So, one way or the other, that will happen after council concerns. And tonight we have with us, we're going to hear about business visits conducted over the past 15 years in Winona. Mike Dieter with the Winona Chamber Economic Development Committee will present the findings from the past 15 years of Grow Minnesota visits. Mike's employed at Express Employment and is new to Winona and is active with the Chamber on this committee. And we said, "Cover 15 years in 10 minutes," so, go.
We are timing you.
Al is. He's a stickler.
Looks like we do have some technical difficulties, so we'll just kind of start. And if Lucy can get a go on, great. If not, we'll just kind of go ahead. Can everybody hear me all right? Great. Yeah, my name is Mike Dieter. My wife and I were newer to the community. We moved here last April from Colorado. So, we just came for a visit, loved Winona so much the first couple hours we were here, decided to uproot our family and I'm here. So, thank you so much for having us. We love it here. I started getting active with the Chamber of Commerce, mostly through my work. I'm a business developer with Express Employment Professionals, so I get to go out and visit with almost every business here in Winona. And boy, do we have some great businesses. So, with that, I serve as the Chair for the Economic Development Committee. We do these things called Grow Minnesota visits, where we go out, usually two to three of us, Lucy's accompanied us on a couple of visits, and we sit down with the business owner or CEO or president, and we just get to know a little bit more about their business. Kind of a snapshot of where they're at, maybe there are any challenges they're facing, and that could be on a local, state, or federal level. And really, we're not there to be the solution providers, we're just there to facilitate. And so, if an issue comes up that we know that, hey, maybe this business, this organization, or committee can kind of help them out, we try to put the two together. So, over the last 15 years of doing these visits, we've found out quite a bit about kind of our local economy and what's going on. And the slideshow, if we get to it, we kind of focus on just the last five years, just kind of the pertinent information. I don't want to be all doom and gloom, but a lot of the businesses are reporting, well, first, business is good, business is growing, this is fantastic. Some of the challenges they're facing are obviously workforce-related. They just can't find quality talent, maybe it's the education level is not quite where they need it to be. And more importantly, how do they attract new talent to move to the area? I fell for it and I love it here, but yeah, how do we get other people to see that vision, that Winona is a great place to not only work but to live as well? Other issues that came out of it were especially related to workforce. Some of the challenges that they're hearing that, maybe someone's coming to town and they can't afford a place to live, or they can't afford a place to rent, and so they're having to live in the outlying communities, and then sometimes they just lose those employees altogether. The image of the public schools, again, is a reason why people maybe aren't moving to Winona. So, out of those, and again, training, maybe they're not finding the quality of employee that they have, and so they're having to settle for somebody who just has two arms and a social security number. Now, out of those visits, we took all that and over these last years, and we said, "Well, shoot, we can just take it, put it in our pocket, take all the results and send it up to the Minnesota State Chamber," and they hold on to it and try to craft some business-friendly legislation. We thought, "Or, we can take it and actually do some things locally here with it." So, first step is just sharing the news with different committees, organizations, and councils. Some of the good things that have come out of these visits, the first one was the Business Education Network, the BEN Network. And basically, we realized that there's a lot of students here, and as soon as they graduate high school, they move away, or they feel like they have to go to a four-year university instead of working at a local jobs here. And so, how's a community, can we reach these students early and let them know about all the great companies that we have here, so we're not losing them to other towns? With that, there's events such as CEO in the Classroom, where we get local CEOs to come and spend some time, and this is on the eighth grade level. So, trying to just start that path, that vision early, that, man, there are some really great careers out there, and not all of them require a four-year degree. For the kids who are on that college path, that's fantastic, but a lot of our local youth, they're just, that's not the right fit for them, and then they're going to be laden with, excuse me, laden with debt. Out of the Business Education Network also came the Reach Program. Now, the Reach Program, they do a lot of immersions, so instead of just telling somebody about the job, which is great, they bring them up onsite to the company, and they do a lot of hands-on activities. They might learn how to run CNC machines, and it's not just production, but Winona has a lot of manufacturers in town. But get them excited and realize that maybe, you know, just hearing about it from an uncle, a brother, or a cousin that they worked there, you actually get to go experience it and see the amazing technology that our companies are using nowadays. It makes it exciting again. Thank you, Lucy, for getting that out. So, this is a chart here of 11 of the 19 businesses that we visited last year increased their head count. And so, you can see companies that decreased, kind of relatively stable and increased, and more companies than not are trying to increase their head count. This is just a chart of Winona businesses that are struggling to find workers. Now, you see where the chart starts was 2010, the end of the recession there, but man, you know, unemployment was 6%, 7%. It was great for our companies to have a little bit more opportunity to find the candidates they need. Well, that graph has completely switched directions. And next slide, Lucy, you can see that we're on par with the rest of the state of Minnesota, so not much difference there. This is a chart, and again, the biggest challenge is to hiring. So, 20 businesses said that the lack of candidates, they're just not there. The other 19 said, "Poor work ethic is to blame." Maybe the lack of technical skills was a barrier for some people, and then the lack of basic education. So, only five businesses reported that education is actually a problem, it was just other factors. This chart here is the level of education that most of the employers are looking for. And so, 29 reported that, you know what, we'll just take a high school diploma or a GED. And personally, what I'm seeing with businesses now is that mandate is even going away. They're realizing and kind of changing some of their corporate policies that, man, maybe we're okay to look at the other section of the population that doesn't even have a GED or diploma. These are some of the comments that local businesses have said about just past workforce issues. They're saying 18 to 25-year-olds, they're hard to keep in Winona. They're currently recruiting, they're looking for the experience, but it's hard to find people, hard to find women in that field, and 90% of the applicants are male. The third one down, getting people to move to Minnesota from other states can be challenging. We have an aging workforce and can't hire young workers who actually want to work 40 hours a week. Jobs are low-skill, but they need to hire 20 to 30 people in order to find five workers who will stick around and show up. Jobs starting at $13 an hour, attendance is the main focus. Said they don't have high standards, they just want the employees to show up. Keep clicking through. So, the first section here is attracting and retaining people to move to Winona. And so, again, how can we make it a more attractive community to live, whether that's housing, whether that's our public schools, whether that's a more vibrant downtown district? Second one down, they're, yeah, rundown, or sorry, rundown-looking central business district. This one too, the proximity to La Crosse and Rochester make commuting to Winona a real possibility. A lot of people that I visit with, a lot of businesses, they don't live here, especially on that higher executive level, HR directors and whatnot, they live in Holman and own Alaska and La Crosse. You can go to the next slide, Lucy. Thank you. Some of the public policy themes, again, housing was a very big concern. Better housing is needed. Daycare is also another one. One that I get a lot, and this is more on the business side rather than the visits, but with the employees, was the public transportation. Most of our manufacturers, their first shift starts at 5:00 to 6:00 in the morning. Our buses, they don't start running until 7:00 o'clock, I believe is the earliest time that they start dropping off after the transfer. They start running at 6:00, yeah, but by the time they get to a transfer station, and then they get to their final destination, or I guess across town where you would actually need to take a bus, it's closer to that 6:45 to 7:00 mark. And so, is there a necessity, or is there a need where enough people would start using the buses if they picked up a little bit earlier, maybe not going to all routes but other parts of town, and also running a little bit later too? I've had people who are taking a taxi to work every day, and when you're paying $30 a shift and you're only making $100 a shift, that eats through your money really quick. Cost of doing business, we hear a lot from business owners, property taxes, and then local government spending. Again, with taxes is always the thing we hear. Are there services that are provided by that for our local businesses? Absolutely, but what are some areas that we can make it just easier to do business here, so when our businesses want to grow, they can afford to do so? This is just kind of a work bubble, all the kind of key phrases that we hear, so, property, taxes, housing, and employees. No surprise there. So, again, we don't want to be just doom and gloom. All right, well, here's all the bad information, good luck with it. We want to facilitate growth and solutions and good ideas. And so, with these visits, again, we start out doing one-on-one business visits, we take that information through our questionnaire, and we report it to the Minnesota State Chamber so they can work on the legislation at that level. But then, if we can share some of our findings like this and turn it into action. So, one-on-one business assistance. In one visit, we realized that somebody was looking for a specific type of property to do an expansion. Well, three weeks prior, we did a visit with a local business that had some property that they were trying to unload, and so we could connect the two and make that business connection work. Doing different events and forums, sorry, Lucy, can you go back real quick? Yeah. Events, forums, and one-time initiatives, again, just trying to get the word out there. Some of the large-scale programs, like I was talking about, the BEN and the Reach Program that came up for our students, and yeah, just getting the word out. So, going back to the Business Education Network, CEO in the classroom, we have coming up the Student Career Expo, and that's in partnership with Minnesota Southeast Tech. Last year, there was 20 schools and almost 1,500 students showed up. And I was just in a planning meeting this morning for this, and they're expecting over 2,000 students this year. And this is from all the surrounding areas, part north is Wabashaw, maybe even up to Fairball, and then La Crosse schools as well, on Alaska. So, again, instead of waiting until the students graduate and it's too late to keep them here, get them excited to stay in our community, how can we start reaching them earlier and realize that we have a vibrant place to work? You don't need to go to Minneapolis or other places to do that. Yeah. Housing, a good thing that came out of that was the Housing Task Force. That started a couple of years ago, partnership with the city and the Chamber, but it was started because of the comments that we were starting to hear from local businesses. Another thing, the Downtown Main Street Initiative, that came out of Grow Minnesota visits. And so, everyone can sit around and complain about our downtown, let's do something about it, and now let's educate our local tenants. And so, tell them about different facade grants that they can apply for and help facilitate that as well. Bring more local events and even steamboats, you know, facilitating any kind of visitor activity and events downtown, if it makes it more lively, you're going to get more and more people who are wanting to move to a town like ours. Quick side note, the town that I moved from, Greeley, Colorado, when I first moved there for college, it had a very rundown downtown. There was the college bars at 10:00, and the other businesses opened during the day, and from 5:00 till 10:00, man, there wasn't a whole lot going on. And a couple of key people came together, and it's almost the exact same thing that's going on right now. And they decided, "Let's bring in newer, better businesses, let's have some street fairs and different events like that." And man, 10 years later from that, they'll get 6,000 people coming from all over on a Friday night for their events, and this is every Friday during the summer. The property rates have been able to increase, and they've got rid of the tattoo parlors and liquor stores and everything else that's maybe unsightly. They've gone to other parts of town, and it's boutiques and restaurants. So, it's exciting to see that this town is definitely on the right path towards that successful growth. Yeah, so, any other things that we experience or discover through these visits, we're going to keep informing the public, keep facilitating, and we'd love to come back and give you an update in a couple of years about maybe some other initiatives that have sprung forward from this. So, yeah, thank you so much for your time. Does anybody have any questions at all, or know of any businesses that would like to participate in doing these visits?
Yes, no, but thank you very much.
I have a quick question here. Yeah, my brother lives in Greeley, so I'm familiar with the community, and yeah, what you're talking about is very evident. The Stampede is a big, big event in Greeley. You know, you talked about all of these issues. How has your group focused on wages within the community and what, how you, you know, how you get your arms around what other places offer as opposed to businesses in Winona area?
Yeah, I guess from a committee standpoint, we haven't done too much from that. From a business standpoint, well, the best thing you can do is share, right? And so, if we can collect data from all these different businesses, instead of guessing what everyone's paying, you can share that median wage data. Just coaching, a lot of people or businesses, they might have a terrible schedule, the work is not good, and the culture is awful, but their solution is to throw money at it, and they'll just keep raising the wages. Well, that doesn't help turnover if you're not willing to change the other parts of your business. And so, definitely some counseling there for the whole picture.
Okay, thank you. George?
Yeah, just one thing. I'm currently a recently retired of the manufacturing workforce after 45 and a half years, and retired financial director from Peerless Chain is out there after, what, 20 years probably? But, you know, we always deal with, you know, and I work with a lot of people, you know, why they don't come to Winona. Well, the reason they don't come is that if they live in La Crosse, on Alaska, Holman, Caledonia, La Crescent, Houston, Rushford, Choist, that whole area there, it's either that is their home and their family is there, and perhaps a lot of them have farms there. So, it's a lot simpler for them to drive here 20, 30 minutes a day than what it is to uproot the whole family and bring them here to town. And as far as, you know, a lot of couples, they live, you know, one may work in Winona, one may work in Rochester, St. Charles will be their home. So, I mean, that's something that we're not ever going to be able to get away from.
That's true. One of the slides, I think, was early on, we kind of skipped it, was because of our proximity to La Crosse and Rochester, we get a lot of people who live there and drive in. Well, adversely, we have a lot of people who are living in those communities, or sorry, we're just sharing it the opposite direction. So, they might live here and they're working in other communities as well. And so, are we going to win the war if we just convince everybody to move here? Probably not, because we're still losing people to those other communities as well.
Because if I worked in La Crosse or on Alaska, I would drive there every day, I would not move there, so.
George, some of us would be okay if you chose to live in Houston. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. No, I think it's the people that are moving here for a job that are choosing to live in on Alaska that is the problem. We, George, we already know you're going to stay here, you're going to be the boss of the fourth ward forever, right?
If you say so.
But, but, but when people are looking for an option for where to take their kids for school or where to get a job, Winona's not their first choice, and all of those things that were listed are one of the reasons why. Although, we're trying to address some of them, it takes time, but I think that's the problem. Like, why you chose Winona, I think you spent time here, you liked it, you chose it. But if you had been recruited here for a job, and you might have looked at some of the surrounding communities and said, "Well, maybe this would fit our family better." That's the problem. And you're right, the schools play a big part in that.
Out of the nine people in my office, three of them live in La Crosse and drive every day.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
City manager?
Sarah Breiler.
Sheer. And John, I just wanted to introduce Sarah to the council. She's completing her Green Core service term with the city. Why don't you come on up? During her year with the city, she's accomplished a number of energy initiatives, including implementing energy benchmarking through the B3 system for over 20 city buildings, collecting data on building energy improvements, compiling information on the city's many electric and gas meters, reviewing results from an electric vehicle suitability assessment, coordinating community solar garden subscription information for the city's subscription, analyzing energy retrofit programs, developing energy curriculum for local schools, and she also has helped plant over 200 trees, organized environmental education events around water and invasive species, identified, identifying and completed green action, or green step actions, which we'll talk about next, and refining a staff survey on environmental initiatives and analyzing the results, which has brought forward a sustainability team that the, for city employees. So, other than that, we hope your time has been well-spent. We know we really appreciate working with you, and we want to thank you again for all your hard work and wish you the very best in the future. Anything you'd like to say for the council?
Thanks for letting me be here and working in community for this. It's been a great opportunity for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, we have been presented as the advanced become a Step Two city in the Green Step Cities Program. So, we got three blocks instead of ones. Quite an accomplishment, I guess. We have to glue these together, is that?
That's with the tape on there.
Make sure you do it with the words right side up.
Well, the mayor kept moving them around, so it's like a Rubik's Cube, I'm not sure I'll get this right.
Steve to put it together behind his back.
There we go, all right. Green step, three, two. That's all I have, thank you.
Vol call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, appointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Inez Henderson and Gania Hesser. Move to approve those. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.2 is the Wildridge Drive Neighborhood Block Party Request for Sunday, September 1st.
Move to approve that request. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.3 is a request to close Chadfield Street on Saturday, August 24th. Move to approve.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.4 is a request to close Caramanis Street on August 24th.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.5 is the West Sanborn Street Neighborhood Block Party on Saturday, September 14th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request for temporary wine and beer license for the Art of the Rural for the Boats and Bluegrass Event.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.7, request for handicap parking on Lafayette and Center Streets for the New Education Village for Winona State.
Make our motion to reduce the tax.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Did I get it wrong?
That's all right.
No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.8 is a license agreement from Tiffany Jensen for building a handicap ramp at 160 Main Street.
Make our motion to direct administration to execute a cash license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is a federal grant offer for the Winona Airport Snow Removal Equipment Building.
Make our motion to approve the attached resolution.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Discussion.
Can Keith just touch on this a bit here, or?
Mayor and council, this is the second step or third step in the snow removal equipment process for the airport, building for the airport. We've received the bids and you have approved them. This is finishing that up and with the grant from the FAA. So, it's a total cost of the project is, it looks like with the administration and design, it has to do over a million dollars.
Paul?
Were there any changes to the design since our last approval?
No, no changes.
Any other questions? Yes, no. Time to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 4.2 is the utility bill adjustment for 477 Wilson Street. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pam and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just a clarification, this is to reduce the bill by $60 and to approve the staff recommendation for a policy change?
Or, or council could do one or neither.
I would, I would move that city staff, that we approve the policy adjustment.
And that's, that's what I would second.
George?
I think that's a good change, because Keith, usually when these bills come in, you see them right away. You have the first input, whether there's a water problem with it or not, and I think giving you, they have the judgment to do that, I think is a, I'm certainly okay with that, so.
Just a point of clarification, does your motion include the resolution to reduce it to the $60?
Both, both, if they are separate, that's my motion. If they are together, that's still my motion.
So, yes.
Yes.
So, yes, the motion includes both the policy change and the reduction.
And the risk, okay.
I just want to say that I really appreciate the staff, the community development office working to provide some help here with the homeowner. Michelle?
I never vote in favor of these because the water's used, and I feel that it's not right to have other taxpayers pay for a water bill. However, I do like that the city staff went over, there's clearly other issues there, and not having running water in a house is a safety and health issue, and so I'm very appreciative of that. I originally thought it'd be okay to have staff make these decisions, but Keith has already, for as long as I can remember, made the adjustments on the front end of the bill. It's only when they've disagreed or been unhappy with his decision that they've appealed. There's a part of me that still says it should be the responsibility of council who are answerable to the community at large for this type of action. We're adjusting budget, we're adjusting what they pay in, and I think we need to know what that amount is and how much we're adjusting should be in the hands of the people that are elected. So, I'm not in favor of that either. I mean, I just think that's one of the responsibilities of our body, is to make those decisions, not to leave that solely in the hands of staff.
Al?
Well, there is a, under their staff recommendation, there is an appeal process to the city manager, and then if that's not satisfactory, then to the city council. So, I think, I think that point is covered, and I think administratively, this is the correct action to take.
I saw that. What I'm saying is, I feel like we should be the ones making that decision, not that they're not capable of making the decision, but that that should rest with this body, not with unelected people. That's where I'm coming from, that whatever the amount is, it should be in the hands of the people that were elected by the population to do it, not by staff.
Keith?
Just a minor point of clarification. In the past, what we've done through practice, if the water did not go into the sewer, then I would adjust it according to just reducing the sewer portion. If it did go into the sewer, then I always brought those to council. This would be a proposed change to that, or I could adjust anything that came to my office first.
George?
In this situation here, definitely was a hardship case. There's, there's no way around it, so.
Pam?
Yeah, I'd like to see some, some ability to ferret out the details, maybe the social details of a case, and, and at least accommodate that in the decision that's made. So, it's not just a matter of where the water went and the amounts, but that we can, as we are doing this time, we can refer people for other services or step in in a humane way.
Any other comments? Take a vote. All those in favor, a little motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six one.
Under new business, item 5.1 is to set the date for the public hearing to consider the resolution to levy assessment for unpaid charges, and Mary distributed an updated assessment roll that included payments through 3:00 PM today.
I would move to approve to set the hearing date for September 16th.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any questions or comments? Paul?
Are any of these carryovers from 2017 or 2018?
Mayor and council, none of them would be like a carryover, because I would have, we would have brought this to you last year at this time, and then whatever was approved would would have gone to the county to put on the property taxes. So none of these should be a carryover from a previous time.
So the, the other thing is, is just looking at, you know, the last year's sheets and comparing, there seem to be a number of repeat?
Most, many, many year by year have the same names. That's not unusual. So they, the same folks did not pay last year and we assess them, so now they're also on the list, so then we assess them to the county, so it goes on their property taxes. So they're paying their utility bill through their property tax.
Okay, so is that a regular thing for some property owners?
Some property owners seem to show up on the list every year. They all get the same letters, they all get the same notifications, they all get the same type of bills, but apparently some people just prefer to pay this way.
Pay the penalty.
Pay this way, I guess. You're right, though, there are quite a few names that you've seen before on these lists.
Okay, and this is a public list, right?
It's a public list. Okay.
George?
And the penalty is what, 15%?
The penalty is 15% and that would go on the day after the next, the council meeting in September, what, 16th? The day after that, the 15% would go on. Right.
And just for the public's knowledge that there are delinquent water bills of $280,000. So they'll keep you busy, Keith.
Al?
Yeah, I just went through the list that I had in the packet, not the one that was recently distributed, and just two individuals apparently on that list. One owes $6,100 for their taxes and then the other one was $59,231. So, you know, yes, we get interest on that. I understand that and they're paid, but, but I would like to see if we can't look at the classifications of those properties, if they're rental properties, to again, when rental certificates are renewed or examined, that if there are outstanding bills, that those outstanding bills such as these are taken care of before the rental certificate is renewed. I believe that's policy right now, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, Mayor and council, it is the policy that as we're going out to do recertifications, if there are delinquent bills and they have to be paid prior to recertifying their unit.
So that includes the ones that are on this list?
Correct, and we recertify every five years, so.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out because, you know, if we look at property taxes and what we certify for property tax increases, that these outstanding bills certainly would make a dent in the property tax levy that we have each year.
These are separate from our property taxes. These are the utility bills. They go, the money here goes to the water fund and the sanitary sewer fund based on the proportion of the bill, I guess.
Certainly, but that also.
So it doesn't go into the general fund or to the recreation fund or to some separate funds, specifically for water and sanitary sewer, some sort.
But again, there are costs involved with all of those that, you know, are a toll for the city, so that's my point.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 5.2 is a transit grant application for one bus replacement in 2020.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 5.3 is a transit grant application to expand the dialeride hours to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday.
Make a motion to approve or adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Al?
Is this from a demand perspective?
Mayor and council, we did a survey earlier this year and we did show that there are, there was a healthy number of residents who would like evening service. I would note, the reason we're only going to 9:00 PM is that is how late the dispatch is currently on from our vendor, and so the hourly rate would stay the same as what we're currently paying for dialeride. If we were to go later, we would have to renegotiate with the vendor to have an additional dispatch or additional hours, and we thought for the pilot project to just go until 9:00.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 5.4 is a levy park gateway certification, certification of completion and final estimate.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
And moving now to council concerns.
We'll start with Pam.
This has been a great year for the growth of flowers and especially pollinator-friendly plants on people's boulevards and in people's yards. I think we, there's been, there have been studies done this year showing that it is making a difference. There are more, there's more pollinator activity and such small plots that people have can make a great difference. And this has been a good year for the growth of all that. I know that, that there have been some cases in which the, the pollinator plants have grown too tall and there are ordinances in place that regulate how tall your plants can be, how close to the street and how close to the corner. Please, if you're not sure about that, take a look at the city ordinances or call the city inspections department. That's all.
Okay, Paul?
I just want to bring people's attention to the study that phosphorus loading for healthy, for Lake Winona. And there are some surprises in the study, so questions regarding that information, we can reach out to our sustainability person, John Howard, or one of the members of Healthy Lake Winona. The data shows some interesting trends that I think are, are not what some of us expected, so if you're curious about that, give one of us a call. That's it.
George?
Thank you. I've answered concerns about semi trucks driving on Broadway, 53 footers going from around Main Street. I know that's, there's been some congestion there by heading all the way to Mankato and from Mankato coming up that way. If we could just look into, see why all this additional truck traffic. 53 footers, 48 footers are, are beginning to use Broadway more than what they normally do. And also, I'd just like to pass on a couple of condolences here, condolences here, first of all, to the Sue Tilmoni family. Sue, who passed away last week, longtime fourth ward resident, and she kept an eye on the warning siren in Sobieski Park and activity around Sobieski Park. So very good woman. She was a telephone operator for many years and then as her health failed, then she had to retire from that job. But to her family, that she certainly will be missed. And also, I'd like to extend condolences to the family of Mike Leaf. Mike Leaf passed away this morning and he's best known for his time as Winona State University men's head basketball coach, winning its, winningest coach in their history, national titles, runner-up titles, and he was just a great motivator. And as his family mourns his loss today, there's many people in this community that mourn it with the family, so thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing.
Eileen?
Nothing, thank you.
Al?
To prepare with councilperson Borzakowski on the passing of Mike Leaf today. Also, would like to welcome all the students, faculty, and staff who are coming into Winona to attend our universities and who are starting now some of our secondary schools as well. It's a great time in the community. I believe move-in at Winona State is tomorrow, so please be careful when you're driving on Huff Street and Main Street as that move-in is completed. So it'll be a definite traffic issue for a short period of time as that is accomplished. And also, I want to thank councilperson Borzakowski for the birthday call. My birthday was last Friday or Saturday, so I appreciate the call for, for him. And I also want to wish my wife, Bonnie, a very happy 50th anniversary that we'll be celebrating on Friday, so that's all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right.
And under the consent agenda, there are the approval of the minutes and a claim against the city by Margaret Havlin.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
I move we close the meeting?
Well, I have a statement I need to read first, so then we can do that. The agenda item for this portion of the regular meeting is to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase of a portion of that certain real, real property located at 515 West Wapeshaw Street in the city of Winona, Winona County, Minnesota, PID number 320007430, containing approximately 75 by 300 feet of southerly portion thereof. This portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council, the city of Winona, will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13D, point 05, subdivision 3C. Now I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?